Evening, everyone. I'd like to call the May 18th City Council meeting for the City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesbi.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Altoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bill and a second by Mary Jill, approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I probably should say Duncan and Bringle for the gal take in the minutes. She's on my case.
Ah!
Okay. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion or resolution is council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending May 13th, 2021. Item B, minute meetings for the May 4th, 2021 City Council meeting. Item C, approve an Anderson water bill request. Item D, approve the purchase of a John Deere Z950M lawnmower and accessories and sell the older lawnmower. Item E, approve a north water reservoir cleaning and inspection. Item F, approve landscaping at the city parking lot. Item G, approve a Mill Street West stop sign at York Street. A stop sign at York and Mill, and West Mill. Item H, approve an East Side Park proposed monitoring well. Item I, second reading and adoption of ordinance 376 in ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls in Minnesota, amending the City Code Chapter 114 and 152 relating to the farmer's market. Item J, introduction and first reading ordinance 377 in ordinance of the City of Cannon Falls in Minnesota, amending the City Code Chapter 111 relating to the hours of liquor sales. Item K, approve resolution 2548 of variance for E. Juneau and Erica Niagram at 717 State Street East. And item L, approve of 2021 street improvements. Is there anything the council like to pull down? Take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All moved.
Second.
Motion by Gesbi, a second by Duncan, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into council business. First item, approve the City of Cannon Falls capital equipment schedule. Neil.
Yeah. As the Finance Committee knows, over the last several months, we've discussed capital equipment schedules for the various city departments and we finally got through them all, which is a good thing. In your packets, you will find the schedules. The cost to these schedules is approximately $312,000 annually, which the general fund will contribute about $256,000 of it, and the sewer and water funds approximately $50,000 and $6,000 respectively. At the last budget cycle, we talked about some LGA cuts that we were scared that were going to happen this year, and all the department heads, as I have said in the past, have done a great job or did a great job at the last budget cycle to reduce their spending and their budgets. With that said, these capital equipment schedules can be funded without an increase in tax levy or an increase in sewer and water rates. Hopefully, you've looked at them because they're quite in-depth, and I guess the main thing is to you and the residents of the city is that we can fund these schedules, which give you guys as the council for planning purposes what you're going to purchase in the next several years, and also the department heads what they were going to be looking for to purchase. So when you do, if you approve this this evening, you can look in 2022 and you can expect the department heads to say, this is what we're going to purchase for that given year. And it'll also be funded, which is a benefit to everybody. I know in the past, last several, I know the street sweeper has just paid off this last year, and we've got a fire truck that we have bonded for. With these plans now, you shouldn't see any additional bonding for any equipment, and I think that's a great step forward. So I guess what I'm asking tonight is to go ahead with these capital equipment schedules and without any tax levy increase and water rate increase, it should be a pretty easy
Any input?
I've got a question. In the introduction to this, it talks about all the cuts, but then it doesn't show us, it doesn't highlight maybe what areas the spending has been reduced in the spreadsheets of the purchase orders. So are there any areas that it's more, I don't want to say drastic, but areas that we see that we went from upgrading this thing every, you know, three years, now we're moving it to every five years? Or anything that, any moves like that?
I'll give you an example on the Public Works pickup trucks. Typically, anywhere from 12 to 15 years, you'll ship them out the door. Our newest one of the six is 12 years old. So it's time to get these schedules in place and get them moving, if that's what your question was.
Yeah, yeah. I saw the cost. Just the breakdown in the schedule and what money from the general fund will be put to stack. But I, like I said, that introduction paragraph kind of said that there were some cuts, so I was just wondering if there were major shifts in planning to make up for that.
No.
Okay.
No. I just wanted to make sure that, like I said it before, that you guys understand the department heads did a great job, and we have the wherewithal this year to do this because of what they did last year, so.
Anybody else? Well, I entertain a motion then to approve the City of, the capital equipment schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Gesbi, to approve the City of Cannon Falls capital equipment schedule. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Item B, approve the Third Street North Water Main Cannon River Crossing. Bill, you want to take that?
Neil, you want me to? All right, so in your packet is a summary of the quotations that we received last Wednesday for drilling underneath the river with a new water main in conjunction with the Third Street Bridge project. And the reason why this is not on the consent agenda is there's just a couple things here that we wanted to point out. So we did a couple things here as we're leading up to getting quotes. We were worried about some things that are going on in the bidding world, and that's primarily the rapid increase in prices, particularly related to anything PVC. So I think if you guys have heard, you know, some of the outages in Texas that occurred over this last winter impacted a lot of PVC plants, a lot of material prices have gone up a lot, and we're having some contractors, there's that actual projected to be a shortage of pipe this summer. So what we decided to do, and then also as we were talking to contractors would bid this project, there became kind of two distinct groups. The group that would actually drill the water main under the river, and then the group that would actually hook the water main up or make the connections back into the system. And really, there are two different groups of people, and the drilling group said, we don't really want to, you know, hook up the water main and pressure test it and put a hydrant in it valves, and that's not what we do. We drill pipe, and we want to leave. But the biggest cost portion of the project was the drilling, so the people that would connect the water main up said, well, we're only, you know, 40 or 30% of the project. You would get better prices if you broke this up into two different packages. So that's what we, Neil and Dan and I talked about, and we said, so we'll do it just that way. So what we did is we bid out the drilling portion of it, so that's what you have in your packet here. Overall, our cost estimate was 170,000, I think it was really 165, 167 total. So this portion of it, we'd estimated to be about 107,000. We were concerned that we were gonna, if something was going to come high, it would be this, because this is all PVC or actually polyethylene pipe. So we were a little worried about that. But we actually came in under budget, so we're really pleasantly surprised or happy with that. So what the plan would be, though, is now, once we start working with the low bidder, which is Ellingson Drainage, as we get their schedule, when they're going to drill this, now we'll have that information when we go out for the second quote, because really, these two contractors will be working together. So just wanted to make you aware that we'll come back with a second quote, probably in the next month or so, to, you know, finish up the project. A couple other things, just wanted to just remind you of, we talked a little bit about. So the other part is, whenever you drill under a river, there is some risk involved, and traditionally, that risk is borne by the city. Now, that risk in this case is small. The risk is that when you're drilling under a river, you know, you're drilling through rock, and there's the chance that sometimes the drill, you know, bit or could get stuck, can't make it under the river. So again, want to make sure as we're starting this project, and that was factored in the decision-making, that we still thought this was the best choice, but there is a small chance that while we're drilling this, you know, there could be a problem. So just wanted to remind everybody that, because as we're talking to the people quoting the project, they asked that question, because they would raise their prices dramatically if we said, if you're attempting to drill into the river and you don't make it, then you have to bear that risk or that cost. So again, small risk, but it is a risk there. So otherwise, Ellingson Drainage is a, you know, they're based out of, well, I was going to say Cassin, but I think it's actually West Concord. So they're a local company here that's done work. We've done work with them before, so, you know, they've done a lot of this type of work. And the second low bidder, NPL, they were the company that did the gas main under the river about 75 feet away from here. So we have a, you know, a case study, so to speak, next door that we believe this can work. So with that long-winded explanation, our recommendation is to award the quote to Ellingson Drainage for the price listed in your memo there of 103,019. So I'll pause there for any questions or comments.
So you're thinking the rest of it's going to be under 50,000?
It'd be in the $60,000 range, correct. Yep. And by statute, anything under 175,000, we can quote versus a public competitive bid. So that's why this came to you, you know, as a quote. Neil, anything? There's a lot of nuance to this job, so.
I just wanted to make. I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood there was two packages here and not this wasn't the total amount that, for the water main, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to award Ellingson Drainage the contract for the Third Street North Water Main Cannon River Crossing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bringle and a second by Lundell to award Ellingson Drainage the contract for the Third Street North Water Main Cannon River Crossing. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, item C is discuss a parent committee graduation request. I don't think Jeff's here tonight, but.
Yeah.
Neil, you want to take that?
There was a request made to the Police Department to, I'll back up a little bit. Last year, when COVID was in full swing and graduation ceremonies at the high school were shut down, they tried to get creative and do something for the graduates. What came out of that was a car cruise after, and I wasn't down there, but after they cruised through and then they ended up doing a cruise down Minnesota and out all the way to the fairgrounds, my understanding. The parent committee, the parent committee instead of the school, is requesting us to provide police escorts for another cruise this year. I did call the superintendent and asked if this was a school-sponsored event, and Jeff at the school says, no, this has got nothing to do with the school. They're going to, they're going to hold their ceremonies, I believe, at the same way as they would normally now. So this request is actually coming from the parent committees, and what they want is, I suppose, the same service as they got last year with two squad cars and blocking off the interchanges or intersections as they go down the street.
Was this a school-sponsored event last year? Or didn't they have anything to do with it last year?
You know, it was such a, they were trying to.
The confusing time.
It was, and I don't know if it was a combination of everything, but now the school is back in and doing their normal process, as I.
Closer to normal than last.
Closer to normal, yes, let's put it that way. So the request is from the parent committee and not the school, and they want to know if we'd be willing to provide that service.
What does, what do you think of that? You know, there's a liability in this thing, too.
But if the parent committee wants to sign on, the same as any parade, if there's any, you know, accident.
Who's driving the cars? Is it students?
The parents.
Family.
Parents? Okay, then that makes me feel better.
The kids are in the, it's usually like pickups or?
Okay.
Corvettes.
That makes me feel a little better.
So then the kids are like in the.
They're the passengers, they're not.
Yep, they're waving to everybody and, yeah.
Well, I did the Fourth of July parade for many years, and we had a liability clause to do that parade with our fair package, you know, for the fair. We had an Adam to do, that included the parade. Now, I don't know in this case if you need a liability thing, but anybody that's in the Fourth of July parade has to show proof of insurance and sign off to be in that parade. And I don't know if that's something we'd have to do in this case.
And is there a difference when you call it? Because last year, it was considered a.
Cruise.
A community event or a cruise, not a parade. There must be a difference, because people keep using very distinct terms.
Yeah.
Well, that's very true. We didn't call that cruise the Fourth of July. That was a cruise, that wasn't a parade, because we couldn't have parades.
Right. Last year was a cruise, and a very good point, because there is a difference, and it might be the liability piece.
I think the distinction is there's no one walking.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that certainly would be one of them, being a veteran of many, many Fourth of July parades.
Makes sense, because there was no one walking.
I really wish someone from the Police Department was here to weigh in on what they, you know, if they think it's not a big deal, or if it's a problem waiting to happen, or, I don't know.
Well, the Fourth of July parade is a little different, because you got kids jumping out and getting the candy. In the last parade we had, we had a horrific accident where a gal fell off.
But, yeah, well, the homecoming parade, too. There was a homecoming parade that happened, too, but I don't know.
Well, if we compare, oh, sorry, Bill.
I was going to say, I worry about the liability issue. If the council feels this is something they can do, which I personally don't, because they're going back to virtually normal circumstance, I think they have to have some insurance, and they have to pay our officers for the time.
Does anyone remember, they used to do a homecoming parade, I don't think they have for years. What, I mean, did the city have to give them permission for that, or did we offer police or ask for insurance there?
Probably not, because it was the seventh grade, the eighth grade, you know, it was different back in the 70s when we did it. No one asked for insurance.
Well, you know, back in those days, people didn't worry about that, you know?
Yeah, they didn't worry about that.
Nowadays, the liability is a big issue.
Well, if someone gets in a car accident, you're going to have a lot of people involved, you know?
And I don't want to be a naysayer. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see it happen, but, boy, I think what's going on with the Fourth of July parade and what we do there and this, it's the same kind of deal, you know?
Well, anytime you're driving on a city street.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, something would happen.
I don't know.
We're on the hook.
City gets their, they're on, yeah, we're on the hook, something would happen, definitely.
Yeah.
So that's why I would like to see insurance and them pay for the service if it's.
That's not, that's not that important. I just, we can provide a couple.
Presumably, everyone's got car insurance, isn't it? So that's really what you need insurance for. You got liability.
And if they don't, they're driving to graduation anyway, so I mean, you have.
Yeah, at their own risk.
Yeah, I guess my issue is, why would we do it? Are people lining the streets for this kind of thing? I really don't know. I wasn't out there last year.
Good crowd last year.
Yeah.
It was a good crowd watching last year.
It was a good crowd?
The streets were absolutely lined with people. It was fantastic.
And not to go back to what Bill said or what Neil said, but this year, it's not necessarily going to be completely normal. They might still have guest limits. It might only be two people per person. So, you know, grandma, grandpa, aunts, uncles, neighbors, all this. That's where, to compare this to last year, it was a great way for anybody to just go up on the street and wave to kids and say good luck and good to see them, because you couldn't go to the ceremony. And I don't know if it's going to be that way this year in the fieldhouse with mask restrictions or numbers of limitation, but I think it's a great idea. We didn't have a problem with it last year. And I understand the liability when you guys say that that's an issue, but if we have some document that we have them sign that they're at their own risk, you know, they don't drive fast. It's like a parade or a cruise. And if all we have to do is give the green light to cops to be the front and the back and block off the streets for a half hour, it's really not that big of an issue.
I don't have a problem with providing a couple officers. I would just like to see, was everyone charred, maybe gets insurance papers from wherever's driving a vehicle, that they've got insurance or something like that.
No, Matt, you mentioned, not sure how many people in our packet, it says, a graduation event without attendee limits, so I don't know if that's correct or.
Yeah, I don't know either. Yeah, it doesn't mean.
And I know that the graduation is closer to normal, but I think that doing this type of a more fun is inclusive of more like friends, because even, you might not go visit your neighbor's kid who's graduating and go sit through an hour and a half of, I'm sorry, very boring commencement. Come on, it's not that fun. But I'll go sit on somebody's lawn and have a cocktail with my neighbor and wave at everybody going by and saying, oh, yeah, that's so-and-so, I used to live by their grandpa, you know, I mean, I don't know. I just, the sense of community it brings, I think, is fantastic.
Yeah. And I would, if we do it this year, I would think it's probably something that's just going to go forward, you know? Once you do something two years in a row, and yeah, I don't know. I thought it was kind of neat last year. I didn't watch the whole thing, but it gives the kids a little send-off and away from the community.
Well, so we make a motion one way.
I will.
Go ahead. A motion to have the parade?
I'm having a motion to have the parade.
At whose cost? Insurance or just?
Well, the question, the requested council action that was brought to us by the chief says either the city pays or by the event coordinator, which would be the parent committee, correct? That's what they're asking for. They're not asking for all the extras of the insurance and liability and stuff. So I think the motion would be for the city to pay for the event?
So it's two, right? We either grant it or deny it, and if we grant it, then who pays for it, right?
Right.
That's what they're asking. So I make a motion to grant and a motion to we pay.
Pay for the officers.
Does it, what is it, like $80? What do we say, it's $70 or $80 an hour?
What?
Isn't that what we charge?
That's all.
So you're, so you're talking about $160? Yeah, I don't think they have to pay that. I think we should pay that.
Yep. I second.
Okay, a motion was made and seconded to approve the graduation parade and providing the two officers. Is that right? Okay. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think we should have to pay. I think they should pay, but it passed, so it's fine.
Let's have a roll call and vote on that one.
Separately?
Yep. We'll say their names.
Bringle.
No.
Duncan.
No.
Gesbi.
Yes.
Cronenberger.
Yes.
Lundell.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Motion passes four to two. Okay. Reports.
Good evening, City Council and Community of Cannon Falls. We do have some really exciting things coming up in the next couple of weeks, three weeks. First off, the flower baskets are going to be hung on Friday, May 21st, and so that's a big cheer, get some color on our streets. And I really appreciate Dan, the Public Works guys, helping us out with that, and I'm looking forward to seeing them. It'll be great. All right, then on June 10th, we have the Chambers Open Air Fair, and this is where we have our vendors booths on the sidewalks instead of out in the street. We don't block any streets, and the vendors are along Main Street, Fourth Street, and Mill Street. And so the reservations or registrations are coming in nicely. We can always use a lot more, and so if you're a vendor of any kind of saleable product, please contact the Chamber, and we'll get you registered. There is a $25 fee if you're not a Chamber member. If you're a Chamber member, it's free. So that's a good thing. Then on June 24th, we are having our 30th Annual Chamber Golf Tournament and Fundraiser. This year, it is going to be at the Summit Golf Course. We are going to be having contests and games, Chinese raffle, mulligans, skins, the strings game, longest drive, longest putt, the Vegas game, which is a double or nothing, and you have to get the ball in the hole within the circle. And so that's called, also known as the circle game. And so we're looking forward to this. We have multiple Chamber members participating as the caterers, you know, the tent people, those kinds of things. So it's more of a community-wide rather than just one golf course, getting all of the business. And so again, there, we are looking for teams. It is $500 per team of four guys, four people, woo, four people. Hole sponsors are 250. We are also looking for gifts and awards. And so you get the recognition, your name will be posted, there'll be a listing on the website, and so if you're interested in doing any kind of awards, cash prizes, we can turn it into Chamber dollars, whatever you would like, please call the Chamber. That would be. That would be wonderful. The Cannon Valley Fair and the Independence Day Parade. If you go out to the Cannon Valley Fair website, click on events, click on parade, and you will find the letter of information as well as the parade unit entry form. And so they've made it as simple as possible. And so Cannon Valley Fair, and you're right there, cannonvalleyfair.org. And so we've been getting requests for that kind of information. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that. One more thing, please know that we are not doing FunFest's this year. We're doing the two open air fairs and hoping to see more people out and it covers more of the downtown area. Any questions? Can I do one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, I want to thank the Cannon Valley Trail and the Cannon Falls Economic Development Authority and CETA. This summer, actually in the next three months, you're going to see Cannon Falls as the feature story in the June Entertainment Guide. In the July-August twenty-twenty-one issue of the Minnesota Monthly Ultimate Travel Guide, we are being featured in that. The summer edition, July-August of USA Today. All of these things are online as well, so we're getting publicity that way. The two thousand twenty-one Minnesota Bike Guide, which comes out of Explore Minnesota. And that is an annual publication, so we're going to be in front of their faces all year long. And the last but not least is the Having Fun Biking Guide, Biking and Hiking Guide. That is an annual publication. It has all of the trails throughout the state and we're right, right there in it. And so we've really bumped up the publicity this year to hopefully get even more people to come to Cannon Falls and experience what we have here. And so if you have any other ideas, just let me know. Thank you much.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, EDA.
Good evening, everyone. One of the biggest updates that we have is that we did receive a business subsidy request from Keller Bartman regarding the apartment complex going, or hopefully potentially going on the Cannon Falls site. We are still waiting for the site plans from them. We were hoping to have had that late last week, but obviously the architect is, you know, in control on that one. But most recent, it sounded like it was going to be about seventy-eight units, seventy, seventy-eight to eighty-five. They did come forward with, in their subsidy request, with some of their, you know, requests for, you know, some subsidies as far as, it'll most likely be in a TIF request. So if we have the site plans before our next EDA meeting, which should be that first week in June, then we should be able to come to council, hopefully that next meeting, and then have a recommendation for you to approve the project in the terms of the TIF. So we'll just keep you in touch with that. But hopefully, like I said, that first council meeting, we should have something for you to review.
Thank you. Public Works Commission. Derek?
I think everything we talked about was on the consent agenda. Let me double check here. We talked about the Mill Street stop sign, the water reservoir, landscaping at city parking lot, the water bill. I don't know. Was there anything not on consent agenda?
No.
I don't think so. Yeah, everything we talked about was on consent agenda.
Okay. Park Board, Matt?
Uh, Park Board, we talked about continuing discussion of the wall at John Birch Park and some render, uh, some drawings that have been given to us by the Bears. The hiring of all the pool workers here for the summer and then just an update on the pool.
Hey, Finance Committee, Bill?
Yeah, um, we talked about the capital equipment that we did tonight and also the ordinance on the Sunday liquor sales hours. We also were updated, Cannon Falls Township was a little irritated with us over the Hayes property and annexation, but we'll see about meeting with them here sometime. We also talked about the solid waste collection, which is possibly looking at a single hauler down the road. But as our recycling contract runs through twenty, the end of twenty-two, it would probably be late this year, early next year, that we would consider going out for RFPs to look at that process. And then we, Neil is getting us ready. We'll be starting the twenty-twenty-two budget discussion here in the, in the near future, so hopefully and the Finance Committee gave some, some guidelines on where we'd like the staff to go on that. So that's it, John.
Okay. Planning Commission?
Okay, um, we did the one variance tonight on the fence item on the agenda. And we also discussed, uh, on St. Clair Street, there was a Habitat for Humanity lot, the house that was already on there. They're interested in dividing that lot in half and having a second Habitat home there. So that process, we kind of gave, you know, kind of a nod to say, yeah, let's look at it and they should come forward in the future with that.
Okay. Library Board, Mary Jill?
Is Nicole here? Look at that.
I am. Yeah. All right, so we have some things coming up. Summer reading is starting on June first and we're going to be offering it for all ages. And in particular, we'll be doing multiple storytimes every week at different parks. And they're going to be led by different people. So Alexa will lead some storytimes. Cindy Zierden is volunteering for us this summer to do storytimes. And I will be doing storytimes as well. We have also booked a number of outdoor concerts at John Birch Park in the Band Shell. Those are usually going to be Fridays or Saturdays and they're going to be open to the public. So this is a really good opportunity for people to participate in a library program. Maybe you aren't aware of a library program, but you like music. So those will be available. Check on our website and Facebook page for the calendar that is being, we're getting it finished up and published. And then we're going to be handing out calendars all over town. We also are going to be doing a three-part art craft, art class in June, July, August. That's where Angie and I are both going to be teaching people how to make art journals and that's a lot of fun. We've shown people some samples already and there's already some high interest. So if you are interested, you're going to want to sign up soon because I think it will fill up pretty quickly. We're also trying something new because this year's summer reading theme is called Reading Colors Your World. We're going with that whole color theme and we're going to be doing two collaborative art projects for teens and adults where we'll have pieces of a puzzle or watercolor paper, depending on which project it is, that people can come pick up at the library, take it home, do whatever art they want to do on it, return it, and then we will assemble the, all of the pieces for a completed art project that then we'll mount and hang on the wall as a permanent art piece in the library. And it's a great way for people to participate and create something that can hang in the library and be there for perpetuity. We are also going to be offering art and STEM programs in parks. And I will be continuing to teach fitness classes at Eastside Park for adults. And we're finishing up the cardio class the end of May. In June, we, and half of July, we'll be doing a balance class. And in July, beginning of August, we're going to be doing adult hula hooping. I've made some adult-sized hula hoops and we'll be, just be having a whole lot of fun with that. And we are also look, is going to be starting our strategic planning process for the next three-year plan for the library. So please be on the lookout for a community survey. We're going to be getting that out as much as possible. If anybody from the library board or I invite you to be a stakeholder in a focus group or whatnot, please respond and please consider joining in and letting us know where you feel like the library should be placed in the, in the community because we want to know your feedback and we want to really make sure that we are doing what's best for the community. And then finally, with the end of the mask mandate, libraries have been just trying to figure out what to do. And right now, our library is following the Safe Learning Plan through the, and do, requiring masks through the end of this month. And the rationale is that we do have a number of young children who are not eligible for vaccination yet coming into the library. So we just want to get more people some time to get vaccinated coming into the library. And I'm, I'm looking at in the summer, masks will just be optional. But just through the end of the month, we're just going to keep staying the course. But we are open to the public. People can come in for an hour at a time. They can use the computers for up to an hour. And we have put out some chairs. So that, oh, and we also have a fax service. I don't know if anybody realizes that. We finally got a fax number installed. So if people want to make faxes, you can. And that is everything I've got.
Very good. Thanks, Nicole. Uh, let's see, Laura, you got anything else tonight?
Nope. Oh, that Laura.
Dan?
I don't either. That was good.
Do we have anything?
No.
We're good.
Dan?
Yeah, I use the community mic.
Oh. The shared mic?
Yes. Oh, and then I stole the chair, so.
He's bringing it. It's good.
After your probationary period, we're going to get you your own mic.
Maybe.
When's mine up?
Hydrant flushing is completed. Now we start on the wastewater side of the, of the system. And we do a designated area every year of town, so you'll start to see that happen in the next couple of weeks. Third Street Bridge work continues. Pool progress, the sandblasters are scheduled to come tomorrow. And they'll sandblast and then paint right afterwards so we can start that curing process. They test ran the splash pad, that's working. They pulled a water line plus a spare water line to the water slide. And now we've poured the concrete to fill in those patch spots. As Kyle said, Friday is Flag and Flower Day in town, so we'll be doing that. Our potholes continue one load a week of hot mix, so we're getting around town at least one or two days a week with hot mix. And we have, June first is scheduled for the Mill Street West sidewalk and curb installation before they do the Mill and Overlay. So we'll try to get in there before the Mill and Overlay people. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Neil?
Just one night, um, you know, the CDC guidelines have changed and I'm just wondering if you as a council want to get back to some normalcy and, and be seated at DIAS all at once. I'd like to see what it looks like because I've never seen you guys sit up there.
Poor Neil. Poor Neil.
With that said, I think we're going to be opening up City Hall and, and you'll see a, a amended city plan coming through. As you remember back, we quit approving them by City Council because the next day they were changing. So we just follow CDC guidelines and, and upgrade our plan accordingly. So I think things are starting to get back to normal. As you can see, even out into the public, it's, it's starting to come, which I think everybody is enjoying. So probably at the next meeting, we'll have these tables taken out and getting you back up on top.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, let's go around. Laura, sorry about that.
I guess we've already established. Took your thunder. I don't have anything either.
No, Matt, Bill?
Nope, I'm good.
Derek, Steve?
I had a question come up to me today about the Memorial Day Parade and I believe from what I've heard, that's on, right? The.
I was just going to ask. I haven't heard a thing.
Um, I, Bob Dirdal told me today that the program is on, just like a normal, a normal Memorial Day. The parade at ten thirty and then the thing at the cemetery. So as far as I know, that's all on, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
It's good to know. The only thing I got as far as upcoming meetings, the only one that's going to happen before our next council meeting is Joint Powers Trail Board is on May twenty-fifth. That's remote. And that's all I got. So with that being said, let's get into public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The City Council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item at a future agenda. I'll open the public input. Second call, public input. Third and final call, public input. Hearing none, I'll close the public input portion of the meeting. And with that, I take a motion adjourned.
All moved.
Second. Motion, McDonald, second, Montgomery. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.